Recording. We can start our meeting tonight with a pledge of the flag. Chief Lefenchek has a flag right behind there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We lost Mike Shepard. He's coming back. All right, can we start the meeting tonight with a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from February 3rd, 2022? Andy, Ruth Seko, any changes, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Citizens comments, we don't have anybody signed up for that. Trustees comments, we'll start with trustee Dryden.
Just the agenda only, thank you.
Okay. Trustee Stebbins.
Oh, I'm jumping around on my screens. I would like to add an item to the agenda if I could.
Okay, by me.
To add discussion, motion, or discussion and emotion to award electrical design project to Poply Design Group.
What is the name?
Not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars. Poply, P-O-P-L-I.
Okay.
Or Poply, I'm not sure how you say it.
That's my video has been paused. This number, my video has been paused.
Hold on, I want some, and Mike just said our video has been paused.
It's on my phone anyway.
Anybody else see anything that says it's not, that's not moving?
I wasn't looking.
I'm on, I'm on Facebook, I see it, I see it live.
Okay, might be her phone. Okay, we have, Bruce has added a motion, item E, under new business. Anything else, Bruce?
No, other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay, we go Megan.
Um, I would just like to mention that the Baldwinsville Volunteer Center is currently taking nominations for the Volunteer of the Year awards for last year, 2021, so um, I believe the applications are available on our website, or Facebook page, or you can call the office if you need a copy of it. Or you can simply write a letter about the person you'd like to nominate. And I believe we have till, you have till the first or second week in March. I didn't come prepared, so I can't remember what the due date is, but it's available on the, on the website. That information. Other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Meg. Ruth Seko.
That's the agenda, thank you.
Okay, Mike Shepard.
See now, I know we're all missing Mark, trustee Wilder. I decided that I'm gonna be the guy who calls all the executive sessions from now on, so I need to call a short, brief executive session for a police personnel matter. I think that's three meetings in a row, or three meetings in a row I've had to call him.
Yeah, you're starting to become old. That's item F on, under new business. Okay, anything else, Mike?
That's it, the agenda's fine, thank you.
Okay, move on to mayor's comments. I guess the new, New Mexican place in town, Miranchito, had its grand opening today, and it's right in the same building as Subway. And a lot of nice reviews from people who've already eaten there, and that the food is pretty good, and portions are big, so. That's the new, the new kid in town, you get a chance, stop in and say hi. Our Main Street grant, we have got a signed contract so that our businesses can start working on their storefronts and upgrading them, but I wouldn't do anything at all if I were a business until I talked to Greg Humphrey. And make sure that everything that you know, are reminded about what the amounts were that were established when the grant was requested, how much the county will provide, and how much the business is expected to provide. So call Greg, and he and Chuck are gonna work on trying to make sure that this flows seamlessly, everybody gets their jobs done. It's gonna be interesting because there's twenty-two businesses, and I don't know how many local contractors we have, but they're gonna be busy. So it'll be interesting to see all the work getting done this spring and in the summer, to see a lot of our businesses upgraded. So again, check with the codes office before you do anything. I posted something on our village Facebook site, Erie Canalway National Heritage Corridor Group has posted some activities for a lot of activities, particularly for kids along the canal for the summer. So people are looking for something a little different to do, something historical. Check that out, you can then check with the, the main group and see if there's anything else. But it's, you know, it's obviously geared to the waterway, and it sounds like it will be fun. I did talk to Mary Frances over at Van Buren, and she said that they have no questions on the agreement, that they were, I think maybe this week, earlier this week, they may have had it in their meeting, and they were gonna forward it to Lysander for their consideration, and hopefully we'll get that taken care of quickly. The planning symposium is March 10th at the Marriott in Syracuse. Any of you as village board members would certainly be eligible to go. We have village board accounting expenses where you can, if you want to go and sit through different sessions, check with Greg, he's got the, he'll have the agenda. It certainly is something we hope our planning board and zoning board members that, that can do it will take advantage of it. And with that being said, tonight we have a new planning board member on the agenda. We still need another planning board member and a zoning board member, so if anybody in the public thinks they would love to be involved at that level with the village, so once a month, if that often, there's months when there are no meetings. It's very interesting work, and it's, it's a great contribution to the community to be involved. And again, check with the codes office, Greg, the stipulate, the big stipulation is just have to live in the village. We don't check and see if you know anything about codes yet, that's all stuff you can learn. We'll give you the code books, you can learn codes as you go along. So we need at least one planning, one zoning, and probably one more of each for an alternate, so. Good time to get involved. Just a reminder, the election is, is March 15th. The mayor and three trustee positions are on the ballot. Appreciate people coming out to vote to let us know that you are aware that we're here. I'm going to be writing to our legislators concerning the state budget. One of the things that we found out, that AIM money that we get every year has not been increased in a number of years, and somebody figured out with inflation, we're down twenty-four percent from zero. I mean, we get so little money compared to what we got, I mean, it's the same amount of money we've been getting for a decade and a half, and as far as the spending power, it doesn't give us much, so we're gonna be encouraging that. And I'm going to be the first one to wish Andy Dryden happy birthday tomorrow, for tomorrow, so. Happy birthday, young man. He's still how shy he is. What are you, thirty-nine?
Yep, yep, I'm that.
All right, that's all I have. We'll move on to department heads. Start with our attorney, Joe.
Team y'all, no comments, just we'll stick with the agenda.
Very good, thank you, Joe. Village clerk, Mo.
I just want to let everyone know that the tax bills will be mailed out on the 25th of this month. And as it states on the bill, you could either pay online, through the mail, we have a Dropbox, or if you need to pay in person, just ring the bell. Also, regarding the election, as you had said before, it's March 15th, and if you'd like an absentee ballot application, just give us a call and we could get it to you. If you stop in, you could fill out the ballot right then and there. After you fill out the application. And the ballot is set for mayor is Dick Clark, and we have three trustees running, Ruth Seko, Nate Collins, and Eric Reinigle. Otherwise, that's it.
Very good, and there was, somebody had a question about, they didn't know that the elections were coming up, and why didn't we tell people that they were coming up? So I had Mo dig up some stuff. We, on the 21st of October, we had a motion to recognize the ballot positions that were going to be on the ballot for March, or maybe, yeah, March 15th. That was back in October. The public notice that runs in the little type where you have to do it, that was the 17th of November. Then on the 21st of December, we had a ballot, or a resolution to approve election inspectors for the night of the election on March 15th. And that same night, we amended the election notice because we had included the judge, and we thought he was up. He says still has another year, so we amended it to just be the mayor and three trustees, so that was the 21st of December. We had that on the agenda, so we have mentioned it, it's not something we run around, I mean, we have other things to do too, and you know, particularly me, I'm running for office, I'm not gonna sit here and tell people, hey, I'm gonna be on the ballot, let's get out and vote. So.
Been on our website as well.
What's that?
Been on our website as well, and probably Facebook.
Yeah, so we do it, we don't put a banner up, but we do, it's on our agenda, if people are watching our meetings, they're aware of it, I think.
Yeah, and then also, you know, if you're interested in running, certainly give us a call, and we could set you up with the website that you would need to go to. But do it ahead, ahead of time.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Mo. Code officer Greg.
Speaking of the planning board, we do have a planning board meeting next Thursday, it is going to be via Zoom. We do have a preliminary site plan for a small, small subdivision along Tappan Street and Gentry Street, and if there are interested parties, they can contact the codes office and either get information, or they can join the Zoom link, or get the Zoom link for the meeting so that they can see what's going on. Beyond that, we do need members for the zoning board of appeals and the planning board. We look for people with, you know, different backgrounds, we don't need particular people that are educated in planning, or legal, or construction. You know, different backgrounds provide different opinions, different outlooks to different projects, so a more diverse board is, is better. So if you do live in the village, we ask that you contact the offices, and we can get you information on what the planning board and zoning boards do, and see if that's something you'd be interested in participating in. Other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
All right, thanks, Greg. Move on to our treasurer, Mark Baker.
Just, just one thing, I think I communicated with each of the department heads individually about as we come up to the end of the year here. Getting ready for the end of the year, and then encumbrance, encumbered funds that you're interested in, and then you know, how we're gonna move through March and into the beginning of the new year. So that's kind of it, other than questions or agenda items.
Anyway, Mark, Mark, we want to thank you for that, and we want to thank you for some of the reports and that we got this last week, and it's, it's really helping us catch up and get back to you and tell you what we need.
And I will tell you, you know, I am working really hard to get some things ironed out so that we make a smoother transition into the new year, and and you know, keep you guys well advised throughout the year.
Thank you, thanks, Mark. Appreciate you, I appreciate getting notes from you, so I understand what's going on, things are happening that.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's one, that gives me one other thing, Dick. Just keep, keep an eye on your, your corporate credit cards. We did have an incident this week, and the bank caught it for us really quickly. Responded really quickly, but we had one of the, our corporate credit cards got compromised. I'm told by people who've been around longer than me that this has happened in the past, and so, and just, I know from my work background that happens all the time. So, so there is a new card on the way to them. The charges have been, they were, the charges were about six hundred dollars, and they've been disputed, and we'll get our money back for them, and it's all good to go.
Sounds good.
So.
The volunteer center had the same issue this week.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it seems to be scam time, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Everybody's just gotta be on the alert, and I'm glad the bank caught it. Save us some problems, and, but it's wise for everybody to check the records when they come in, and bills and stuff, and make sure it's something that we actually bought, and.
Yeah. Yep.
Very good, thanks, Mark.
Yep.
We don't have Ruth Troy tonight.
No, but I do have a few things for her.
Okay. Go ahead, Ruth.
Say. The senior center still has COVID test kits available for seniors, so stop there and pick one up if you're interested. And she wanted to mention, like other village-owned buildings, the masks are optional now, and she also wanted to thank the DPW for painting their ref room. Thanks, Chuck. And that's it.
It's always nice because the, the senior group is always so grateful when, when we do things to make their facility better. I mean, they, they take a lot of pride, if you talk to some of the people, it's like they have ownership in that building, and so when we go over there and we paint, or we put in, you know, flowers, or whatever we do around the outside, and we take care of things, they notice it, and so it may seem like a small thing, but it was, it's huge to all the seniors, so. Thanks to you guys, Chuck.
And, and it's clearly a process, and it's kind of fun, Jeff Boardwell's a perfect one to be over there. Everybody's gonna ask him what he's doing, or how he's doing it, and, and it's, it's, it's fun, but they had some, we had some painting that I didn't realize that they wanted to get done, and Ruth called us, we got to that, and they had some, had some work on, on some of the ceilings, and patching a few things, and Jeff took care of, took care of all that, I think, the last couple of weeks.
Jeff's a pretty valuable asset.
He's good with that.
Yep. All right, Chuck, you're up, Public Works.
While we're in the winter mode, we're able to get the snow removed again from the business district down in the downtown area, which, which really works well now, now, especially now that everything's melted down. That just opens things up for them a little bit, works well. Now we've gone from freezing cold to warm, we had two water breaks this week, so we're out working on the water breaks. We also, last week, got this, we, we got the tub grinder in, and usually they're in and out in the day, that's for all the brush pickup all summer long. We had, we cut so many trees down this year, and so much of the ash stuff there, and they're in an extra day, which gets a little pricey, but we did have money left in the budget for that, they got in, got out, did a great job, got all that cleaned up. The Christmas tree pickup is done, we keep getting calls that, where we, we've been through a bunch of times the Christmas trees. The snowflakes, we got all the Christmas decorations down, and we had some issues with snowflakes, and we were afraid we were gonna have to start buying new ones because they're, they look like the, half of them were working and half of them weren't, and the guys at highway got them down, and, and we priced new ones, and priced what it'd take to rebuild them, and it was just all crazy. Well, they started taking some of the bulbs out, and they're all just corroded, and we, they, in, in the, some of the downtime, they took a bunch of them out and got them repainted, and we're gonna get them back together, and we should be good for a few years. That one, that one, that one, much better than expected, because I thought we were gonna really have some problems, and because, because they're not cheap, and out of budget, that would have been a tough thing for, for next year. Other than that, unless there's questions, we're all set.
I've I haven't heard any complaints all winter about snowplow, so.
Good.
Most of you guys are on top of things. All right, we'll move on to the police. Chief Lefenchek.
Mayor, I will just stick with the agenda items unless there's questions.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Pending business. Discussion recommendation from the perks committee regarding the revised park application and fees. Who's going to address that? Or do we have anything new?
Um. We do have something, something new, I think what we'll do is we'll send it out to the board, so they have the opportunity to look at it. We're basically trying to, trying to clean it up and make it a little more streamlined and accessible to people. So, yeah, we'll.
I think I did, I did send it out to the board.
Oh, everybody did get it?
Yes, should have, did.
I don't remember.
Did everyone, did everyone, anyone get it?
I didn't see it.
Okay.
That doesn't mean I didn't get it.
Right.
Once in a while I miss things, but I didn't, I did not see it, but I'll take a look.
If you can resend it, Mo, or have Jody resend it, and we can, we can discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Meg. Item B. Discussion possible action regarding the proposed water rates. Bruce, this is your ballpark.
Okay, I'd sent out a proposal that called for a three percent increase of water in the, for in-village residents, and a four percent increase for out-of-village residents. The percentages sound significant, however, we're, we're talking minimal, your quarterly rate for having a water line coming into your home goes up fifty cents. The use of water, it goes up four cents per hundred cubic feet, so these aren't huge raises, and it's it's essential for us to keep the water department ahead. This would be implemented in July for the next four quarters after that. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the proposed water rates for 22, 23.
I'll say.
And a second from Meg, any other discussion, any questions for Bruce?
It's eighty-four percent cheaper than Aquas water rate. When you include all the meter charges and the water charges.
Yeah.
For an average residential service, it's eighty-four percent cheaper.
Wow.
Substantially.
Pretty good, thank you, Andrew. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, we'll move on to new business. I get a motion to appoint village resident Kevin Hamilton as a planning board member effective February 22nd, 2022, at a rate of fifty dollars a month.
Move.
Megan, second, Mike Shepard. Any questions? Greg has talked with them. So. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item B, can we get a motion to appoint Robert A. Thybolt as a police sergeant, effective March 5th, 2022, at a salary of eighty thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars a year? Mike Shepard and Ruth Seko? Any questions? We do have soon-to-be Sergeant Thybolt here, anybody got any questions or comments?
Mayor, could I make some comments, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Bob is a been a member of the police department here for the last fifteen years. During that time period, he's been voted by the members of the department as the Officer of the Year on six different occasions. I think that speaks very well of his commitment to the organization, his his drive to perform his job capably, and Bob, throughout his career, has, has made a name for himself in a few different areas, primarily as, as a criminal investigator. He has solved numerous cases just because of his diligence and hard work, and stick-to-itiveness, if you would. As I've read, as I was looking through some of the Officer of the Year awards, as I was preparing my remarks for tonight, you know, one theme kept coming back, and that was Bob's willingness to assist on other officers' cases and to help them out. And I think that speaks well to his, his future as a supervisor. He's taken on a greater leadership role in the organization in the last few years, he's one of our firearms instructors, which is a very important task for us, and I wholeheartedly recommend him to the board, and I look forward to having him as part of my supervisory team here at the police department.
Very good, anybody else comment, anybody like to?
I'd like to say that, you know, you know, I gotta say, you know, the offices are great, working with the codes office, Bob especially. He and I have had to do you know, some coordination with some different issues going on with some different properties over the years, and it's always been great to have him out there, when he's out there and he sees an issue, we can, you know, partner to get things taken care of, and it's great to have the both departments working so well together.
That's great to hear. Great to hear, and I'm very pleased watching Mr. Thybolt progress to this position, so. If, if anybody doesn't, doesn't have any further comments, I would like to ask for vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? I didn't ask you, Bob, if you wanted to say anything.
I'm just, uh, just happy to be here.
A man of few words just gets the job done, right? All right, thanks, Bob, and congratulations. All right, we'll move on to item C. Discussion possible action to pay our treasurer additional five hours per pay period at twenty dollars an hour until April 1st, 2022, retroactive from February 7th, 2022. I would just say that Mark has been working overtime, getting everything straightened out, taking over his new position, I don't, I don't think we're babying him and saying that he's not going fast enough. I think he's got a bundle of stuff, different things, he's dealing also with the, the ARPA money, and how we handle that, different things that have come in, and I'd like to at least get him through till April 1st to say, we don't expect you to, to give up your life for nothing. So that's why I proposed this, if anybody has any questions, discussions, and if anybody would be willing to make a motion. Any move? Second, Megan, any other comments? I just, I think you're doing a great job, Mark, and we appreciate how you've stepped in, and I think, and sometimes I think people think all you do is write checks. That's the easy part.
That's what I thought when I got appointed. I, I will tell you that there is a lot of, I'll, I'll call it COVID-related working remotely work, and there have been a lot of challenges in the remote environment in that role, and as there have been in other roles, and so there's this backlog of work. And it just, it's, you know, there are some immovable objects when you're doing a financial, when you're in a financial role, and one of them is the end of the year, and one of them is a new budget for the new year, and things like that, and it's, um, so it's, um, this is a, this is a challenging, lot of work time right now.
Yeah, I'm hoping that the time you're putting in now, eventually you'll be able to sit back and have a much more well-oiled machine, that, you know, you'll, you'll know right away where you gotta go, where you gotta find things, and, and I certainly appreciate the extra time you're putting in, so.
My pleasure.
We have, we did not vote, right? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. Item D, can I get a motion to renew the 2022 vision proposal with our current Um, item D, can I get a motion to renew the twenty-twenty-two vision proposal with our current carrier shelter point vision at the current twenty-twenty-one rates effective March first, twenty-twenty-two? Oops, Mike Shepard and Megan, any questions? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. Um, item E, can I get a motion to, um, I'm trying to figure out where to word this to hire the Poply Group as our engineer for electrical specs for the Canton Street Water Project to not exceed eighteen thousand dollars. Is that right, Bruce?
Yeah, I think it's Poply. No, it's Poply. I don't know what their name is. It's Poply Design Group.
Poply Design Group, okay. Can I get a motion? I'm a can see Andy's hand and Megan, uh, any more, any questions for Bruce on this? This is, this is to get the specs drawn up to wrap up the electrical work over at the Canton Street Water Works.
This is to get the project rolling.
And so we can finally get started. We have a grant for, to help pay for it, but we need the electrical uh specs to be drawn up by an engineer and these people are going to do it, so.
And once they stamp it, there's then there's errors and omissions. We're kind of covered if things were protected.
Okay.
The village just had to use that in the past for other situations.
Very good. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. Um, next thing we have is executive session. Um, anything we need to discuss before we go to executive session? I assume the chief will need to stay. Um, and uh otherwise, the rest of you are free to enjoy your night. Now, can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Boop.
Ruth and Megan, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Those of you who don't need to be here can sign off.
Aye.
Good night.